To the flag of the United States of America. Just hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Professor, roll call. Okay, again, are you?
Yeah.
I wasn't either. Go ahead.
Christie Campbell, here. Christie Thomas, yes. Christie Fritz? Christie, yeah?
Yes.
Christie Henny?
Here. We have six, five persons, and soon be six. That's the roll call. We do not need to do 3.2, the remote participation that we need. We're gonna move right on to reading of the oath. Although, Ray, you read up. I have not ever given any evidence of the oath before. Or any... So, um, you seem to get married in October.
In October.
Your itch is nothing. Alright. So, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Irenolo Gaytown Jr.
Irenolo.
Is only affirmed that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
You solemnly affirm that.
Of the office of trustee as a member of the board of trustees. What is duties of the office of trustee?
The duties of the office of trustee as a member of the board of trustees.
Of McHenry.
Of the McHenry County Conservation District.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
Of the state of Illinois.
With the constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
Illinois compiled statutes.
Any applicable rules and policies.
Any applicable rules and policies.
Of the county of McHenry.
Of the county of McHenry.
And the policies and bylaws.
And the policies and bylaws.
Governing, governing McHenry County Conservation District.
Governing the McHenry County Conservation District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Been to two meetings, two long meetings already, so he's ready to roll.
So, welcome and thank you for volunteering for this. Hey, public comments. Anyone here to make a comment?
No, there's no one.
One? Alright, great. New business. Discussion on the reestablishment, oh no. Oh, wait, it's very different. Discussion of the reestablishment of the Coon Creek Drainage District. Tyler Armstrong, having Brad go first, and then you'll be on. Alright, thank you.
Well, nice to everybody in person. It was nice last one, it was nice this one. Brad and I are going to do more of an informational presentation to you that covers the, not only what we know historically about the Coon Creek Drainage District, and I'm sure that Tyler can answer it. But also the relationship to the district protected public open space. And a little bit about what that public open space and how it's changed over the years. So, currently, the way we identify this area is actually as part of the Kishawaki River corridor. And we reference it as the Coon Creek section. Coon Creek is one of the larger tributaries to the Kishawaki River. It flows through several counties, but out of McHenry County in Boone. And then eventually joins with the Kishawaki and Boone County. So, you'll hear us often refer to this as the Coon Creek section. And then generally, the lands are south of Route 20. The district also owns lands north of Route 20 along the Kishawaki River. The district became involved in this project around the year 2000. It was a project that was developed by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. And they partnered with the Boone County Conservation District. Conservation District, and obviously, the location on the county line is the reason why Coon Conservation District is involved. The acquisition of lands in this area was funded through a combination of open land trust fund monies and through district bond referendum monies, which were available at the time. In 2001, the project was renamed the Crow's Foot Marsh Project after a feasibility study funded by the Illinois Clean Energy Foundation that took a look at the area and its potential for having a large marsh restoration and for becoming a large regional open space area. From the district's perspective, approximately 1,130 acres on nine parcels constitutes what the district owns in the Coon Creek Basin. Around 1,000 acres, slightly under that, 996, are within the Coon Creek Drainage District. I would add too, that four additional parcels were purchased with the same open land trust fund money, but they were purchased north of Route 20 along the Kishawaki River. So, that gives you kind of an idea on where we're talking about in the county. It's the extreme west end of the county, right at the border of McHenry line. I'm good with going with the small ones, if you want.
Yeah, it's just with tapping. And the public side is small, and this side is big, so I'm trying to figure out why.
Well, that kind of fits. It's a very complicated site.
Yeah. You could go with that, but...
Okay. So, we'll talk a little bit about the original character of the land, because it's important to understand that character shapes the discussions that you'll be having later and why Drainage District actually wound up being formed to facilitate farm drainage in the area. So, if we just look at it from a landscape perspective, from a bird's eye view, and try to imagine what that was like at the time settlement began in the county. It's a part of the county that's topographically fairly level and low. It has a few generally rolling areas. But it's dotted with numerous small basins and depressional areas along the stream as fingers of wetlands that extend up into the upland areas, or that were wetlands at one time. At the time of settlement, it's likely dominated by a very complex series of wetland communities that integrated into one another. Some of these were marshes, either basin marshes in small depressional areas, or the majority of streamside marshes, which actually got their water from periodic flooding of Coon Creek. And that was in its birth with Sedge Meadow, and then Wack, and Middle, or fairly well-drained prairies scattered throughout there. The area was maintained. There was no timber, and that's kind of an important thing to understand about the site. It was never a timbered area. There are trees there today for different reasons. But originally, it was a wide open area, and it was maintained in that openness by two factors. There was frequent fires, very fires that swept through the area in the fall when the wetlands were drawn out. But also, frequent flooding kept the area from having tree cover established in it. It was also very rich wildlife areas. A lot of these large wetland complexes were, especially for waterfowl and wading birds and shore birds. And it supported some important spawning areas for game fish that used both marshes and streams for part of their life cycle. So, that kind of gives you an image of what the area we're talking about was like before McHenry County was settled, before the life size changes to the landscape began. And a fair question is, how do we know that? And the answer is that we have some fairly good records from the period of time when the county settled. In order for land to be claimed and turned into productive farms, you had to have a description of that land. And to do that, government surveyors came from McHenry County in 1837 and 38. They laid out the townships, the six mile square townships. They also laid out the individual one mile square sections within those townships. And the survey gives us a lot of information, not only that they draw maps, which is what we're looking at here, but then also, we're required to leave descriptions of the landscape every half mile. So, if they monumental a corner, a corner, and moved to the center of the section, and then to the far end of the section, they had to leave two descriptions of what each half mile. So, it gives us a half mile by half mile description of McHenry County at the time of settlement in 1837. This is the overall map that would have been prepared once the surveyors arrived in St. Louis after they did their work. And it shows us a number of things. What we called out too, the yellow areas approximately where district land is at. And you can clearly see from the map that there were widespread wetlands that occurred along Coon Creek and its adjoining floodlands. That's what the hatch area is. And district land is pretty much smack dab in the middle of what was one of those larger wetland complexes. I'll share with you a couple of comments from those surveyors, just because they're rather interesting and they give you a feel for the land. So, their notation, there are just three of them. They're very short. They described the area and the creek as a creek confined to no particular channel, spreading itself throughout the bottom. Another script is Raccoon Creek losing itself and turning into a swamp in place of creek. And my personal favorite, land all swamp fit for nothing. And so, we come to the 1872 atlas in McHenry County, which is actually a very valuable set of maps. Because they were hand drawn, and they included a lot of what we would call today ecological information that we're able to use to transition from 1837 to 1872. In this map, we can see that there is no timber located in that township, except close to Marango and in the south end. So, the area we own, again in yellow, very much in an area that was wide open. The stream has not yet been channelized, and you can see several feeder streams coming into it at various places. The reason for that is this map actually dovetails with the beginning of drainage technology, as I've last talked a little bit about that in the next slide. But it's so early in the process that not much has happened to the landscape. So, this map delineates that original course, and again, you can see those significant wetlands. Next one? This is a map from 1939, but what I'm using it for is to call your attention to those wetland signatures that remain in the soil. And so, you take a look at what appears to be dark fingers that come out. This map is taken after the Drainage District has done its primary work from 1914 to 1939. But the land still retains those wetland signatures on the soils. And what you see is what looks like a series of fingers coming out from the area where Coon Creek is in the western portion, or the left of this photograph. And those signatures remain today. If you were to fly over the area, you'd be able to pick out where those original wetlands are at. The ground retains that memory for a long, long time, even after it's been drained. By the time we get to 1892, we can still see that Coon Creek is in a naturally meandering port. And if we were, this was known historically in this time period as the area we own, as Kearney's Slough. And the land used in here was agricultural at that time, but reflected in agriculture of the late 19th century. You would have seen, had you been walking around there in the 1890s or so, the area would have still had crops, but there would have been summer fields, crops that could be planted. A lot of playground, a lot of late summer pastures. So, the agriculture was adapted to an area that flooded frequently. Next one? The next two slides are going to talk about what became a very dramatic change both for agriculture technology in the United States and created a perception about wetlands and their value or lack of value that persisted for a very long time in the United States. The fellow on your left, that dapper-looking guy, is John Johnston, who was an immigrant from Scotland. And he immigrated to the United States in the 1840s, settled in New York, and brought with him the idea that you could improve land by installing drainage, under drainage, as we called it, in wet areas. Up until that time, that was not how we managed our land in the United States. Those wet areas became late summer pastures or late summer hayfields. Well, Johnston was right, and he spent the next 40 years figuring out how to perfect farm drainage. By the time it arrives in Illinois, it's right at the eve of the Civil War. And so, not much drainage gets done in the 1860s for obvious reasons, because first we're in the war, and then we're in the aftermath. But by 1870, drainage technology has really arrived across the upper Midwest. And so, you see a massive conversion of wetlands from 1870 to 1940, when a lot of our existing farm drainage went, the infrastructure was built into the ground. And that is really kind of the period where you go from large mid-continental grasslands to large mid-continental farm fields that are producing a lot of grain. This coincides with really the laws that began the Illinois Drainage Code, that a lot of them are passed in the 1870s to facilitate drainage. And those first Drainage District Acts actually date back to the early 1870s. I'm sure Tyler can talk about that. They're fun to read. They're very archaic English language. And they're based on common law drainage patterns that come straight out of England. I put the thing on the right here, because if anyone's looking for a great vacation, there is a drain tile museum in New York. And you can spend the entire afternoon looking at three floors of drain tiles in phases, so if you don't want to go to Wisconsin Dells, this is like...
Is that a road trip for the trustees?
Road trip for the trustees. Next one? And these two slides really sum up that prevailing attitude that came from the ability to drain wetlands. The one on the left is from International Harvester. The one on the right comes a little bit further east. But they really reflect the culture of the time, which, America is primarily an agricultural country. Most people live on farms, and they live on small farms. So, the ability to drain even a small slough is important to a family farm, which might be no more than 80 acres if people have to make a living off of it. What had began to occur in the 1960s is the realization that draining every square inch of wetland was good in some ways. And in other ways, it created other problems. And the other problems that it created primarily were how do you handle all that water that once sat on the landscape coming into streams and into other water bodies very, very quickly after the rain? So, I think what we've reached really is, and the Illinois Drainage Code reflects this, it has had additions to it that actually highlight the value, environmental values that may be on lands within the Drainage District. I think what we've come to is kind of a balance point, where we realize that some lands probably should have been drained, some lands should have. And we're always looking for that balance point between how can we keep agricultural production and how can we also keep environmental values at the same time? I think I have one more. Yeah? Nope, one more. So, in 1916, Black Book, the Coon Creek Drainage District has already been created. But usually, it takes a couple of years to get those initial plans done. Remember, these folks are dealing with a very, very large wetland. It has to be drained efficiently in order to make it possible to farm all that land. So, you still see Coon Creek in its original pattern in 1916, but that will change very rapidly over the next decade. And at this point, I am going to turn it over to Brad, and he's going to go into some more details about the Drainage District and about some of the problems of rainfall patterns.
So, yeah, as I mentioned, the Drainage District was born in 1914. And again, the major drainage occurred in the first 20 to 30 years of the Drainage District establishment. The interesting thing is it's over 7,000 acres, and it includes McHenry County and Boone County. So, it is very large. It's a very large Drainage District. We have many other Drainage Districts in the county. It's one of the larger ones, and mainly it's because of its topography. It's very flat. So, I'm going to throw a disclaimer right off the bat. Some of this, we don't know exactly. So, again, this was going on in 1981. We think it was decommissioned. Maybe Tyler has better information on that. But we do know that it has been inactive for about the last 15 or so years. So, and part of the reason we're having this discussion is we're looking at the county. The Coon Creek Drainage District is looking to reestablish, so that's why we're giving this background information. So, I think Tyler will probably address that as well. So, here's where, again, where we sit, and we're in an interesting location. So, right on the county line, all the water in the District from, the Drainage District from McHenry County flows right through us. So, the main ditch flows right through our property. And you can see on this map both ditches and drain tiles, main tiles. And this is a little more of a close-up. And again, when we, when the district started purchasing this land, we knew, it was kind of an interesting thing. At night, we got asked to look at it. And we have not done any restoration there, because we cannot do any wetland restoration there, mainly because of the drain tiles flowing off property. Whenever we do a project, we have to make sure it doesn't affect our adjacent neighbors. And these drain tiles flow off property. It's extremely flat. So, we couldn't do these kind of projects. We couldn't do our normal wetland restoration project without impacting our neighbors. So, that's why those projects have not been done to date. So, I think the next slide will show a little close-up. Amazing is the plan is just pretty detailed. So, it shows you how many feet of six-inch tile, how many feet of eight-inch tile. And as you see, as you go further downstream, the tiles get bigger. I think our farmers know that for sure. That's one of those things, that water, you need to have more volume in the tile to handle more water. So, these drain tiles, again, are underground. We don't know how deep they are. But they flow underground, and they drain directly into an outlet, typically a ditch or a creek. These are basically, plans are not as built. So, if you look, there's a little dotted line kind of right in the middle. That is actually where the ditch got dug. So, they had to cross out. So, they, these are not exact, but they're pretty darn close. And there could have easily been more drainage added than what is shown here. So, these are, again, are mainly the main drain tiles and the ditches that were dug. So, again, this kind of shows where our property is and why we haven't done wetland registration there, because these tiles flow directly off property, and we don't want to flood our adjacent neighbors. That's always been our practice. What is neat, and we do a lot of research, that kind of term, the terminology, forensic ecology. We get serious about it. If you look very closely, kind of a diagonal from northeast to southwest, there's a line. And sometimes you see it, but yeah, it's better on this screen. But anyway, there's a line there. That is the drain tile. So, these drain tiles will leave a signature, if you can find an early enough one, to when the tile was actually dug. So, that's what we see here, is, again, it wasn't the exact spot, but it's pretty darn close where that tile was put. And again, that wetland signature is there as well. But what isn't shown on here, which happened later, is there was a ditch that was dug right up to the middle of this field. So, we think that the tile was, is deeper than the ditch, but they did actually dig a ditch to enhance drainage in this site. So, they were continually finding drainage in this area. That's right there, exactly. So, again, we have repaired the ditches and drain tiles in the area. That's our common practice. So, we have a ditch, I'm sorry, a plugged drain tile. We will fix it. If a ditch needs to be cleaned out, we will work and get the permits necessary and clean out the ditch. So, we have done those things. We do have conservation plans, so we have field borders and filter strips. We have actually recently taken land out of production that frequently flooded. So, we have done quite a bit of that. So, we do have conservation plans in the area. We have plenty of program in the area. So, we do have public access to this area, but it is currently farmed. But flooding has continued to be a problem. We'll show you some photos of some flooding that's occurred. So, yeah, we're just like another typical landowner down there. You have to deal with the flooding. We have had prevent plant from our farmers the last couple of years, not this year, because it's been so dry. But in 2020, 2019, the farmer was not able to plant down there. Yeah.
So, Brad, I'm on a buck, 1,000 acres. How much is leased agriculture?
Yeah, except for the ditches out. Yeah, pretty much the whole thing, absolutely. Except for the areas we've taken out of production to put in habitat. So, probably, I should say, it's 996, so let's just say it's 800 some acres that are in
Take 809.
809 in ag production.
And is that row crops or pasture?
Row crops.
Row crops.
Row crops, yeah. So, here's, and actually, when we purchased the property, and of course, we wanted to know more about it, and it didn't take long, this is going back to 2004, had the first flood events since the district owned it. So, we went up and took some aerial photos, and this is before Google. It was easy to do this with Google, but we had to go up and take pictures. So, this was in May 2004, and this is Grange Road and I-90. So, this is not where the district owns, but it's just a little bit further upstream. But it just shows the flooding throughout the whole stream corridor. And this is where we're at. So, Burma Road is on the right. Jackson is kind of where, is actually in the middle going left to right. And so, where that, where the stream turns, that green corridor turns, that's ours, and then north of that is ours. So, you can see there's obviously extensive flooding in this area.
When was that picture taken?
May 24, 2004. So, this is shortly after we got it, purchased this land. And yeah, this is Burma Road is in the middle. This is the time we're looking to the northwest. And that turn is always a good feature there we can look at. So, we own that big box in the middle. That's a couple hundred acres. And we own to the north, which is to the right. But yeah, again, Burma is going right through the middle of this picture. And this is in Boone County, looking back towards McHenry County. And so, you know, that's one of the things that's unfortunate with the Drainage District and with drainage is, you know, you can enhance your drainage, but guess what? It's going downstream to the next neighbor. And so, we actually get that from DeKalb County. So, we have water from a channelized ditch coming in from DeKalb County, comes right into McHenry County, starts hitting the meanders, slows down, and spreads out floods. That's one of the issues. And here's channelized, it's coming into Boone County. So, flooding is going to be an issue, no matter what, some of these lowland areas. And again, that shows on the phenoflood mass. I mean, our area is right in the middle of that big blue area. That's in the flood zone. So, that's, again, that's why we would not develop that area. It's very limited what we can do with it, just because it is in the flood zone. The next slide just shows further upstream, just get towards DeKalb County, the whole stream corridor, which just makes sense. This whole stream corridor corridor is in the flood zone. And this is interesting. I kind of get interested in historical data. So, this is actually until present day, 2020, and it just goes the annual precipitation. And obviously, when you can put it on Excel, you can put the trend line in. So, the trend line shows, you know, more precipitation over time. So, but then, when I looked at this, if we could go to the next slide, and it's too bad we don't have Dave Grant here, because he could tell us what it was like in the old historic times. I was going to give him a hard time, but... If you go, it is amazing how, when you look at that late 1800s, how dry it was. And then again, this one is only goes from 1871 to 1940. So, basically, just broke the data set in half. So, it's 70 years of data on this one, and I'll show you the next 80 years. But there were some significantly dry times, and it is interesting what they were probably able to do with drainage and how easy it was, how hard it was to farm this field. But if we go to the next slide, this is from 1940 to present day, and we all know, I mean, we've had, and this is actual data, that rainfall is increasing. So, not only we're getting more, but, and I don't have the data for this, but our rain events are larger. So, we used to get cap and trains, one inch trains. Now, we're getting four inch trains, five inch trains. So, those are things that, you know, from a flooding standpoint, it's going to exacerbate the flooding issue, you know, here and other places. So, this is kind of the things we're dealing with. We just wanted to put that all out there and let you know where we're at.
The only thing I would add, we found this information this morning. There was a Coon Creek watershed studied on the 1999, and Brad talked about everything coming in from the south. There is a bottleneck at the confluence of Coon Creek and the Kishawaki River to the west. And some of the flooding is exacerbated by backwater backing up from the main stem of the Kishawaki when it's flooded. So, this area is getting hit from both sides.
You mentioned that we have to do some repairs. Do you have any idea what we annually spend, or is it not much, or?
Well, we budget about $25,000 for, we call it farm infrastructure, drain tile repairs, things like that. That's spread throughout the whole county.
Yeah, I didn't know if we had anything down there related. It's been very major, or it's just been a...
No, so, yeah, the major thing was... No, so yeah, the major thing was taking land out of production that was frequently flooded. Farmer didn't want to take on that risk. So we said, you know, we'll, we'll have that discussion. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I also have some questions. Very interesting guys. Thank you very much. And now we'll have Tyler Wilkie is here to. Tyler, have you met, you know?
I, I don't think I've met everybody, but Brad, thanks very much. I'm a math guy, so yeah, oh yeah. So I'm Tyler Wilkie. I'm an attorney with Zank Corner in Saladin and Crystal Lake. And McHenry County my whole life, so. So.
And you're representing who?
Yeah. So I represent petitioners of landowners in the concrete drainage district that are trying to reactivate the district. There's been some miscommunication or confusion as to if I'm representing Duke Energy. Duke Energy is looking to put in a solar farm in Southern Riley Township and in Fallonist Spring Township in Boone County. When they were out talking with landowners trying to find sites for their panels, they asked them, well, you know, what can we do to be a member of the community and help out? You know, what, what do you guys need? And the thing that they kept hearing was, hey, this, this drainage district is important to us. But it's going to take some doing to get it back activated again. So because of that, I got a phone call. I'm a, I farm full-time too, and I'm an attorney. So I specialize in agricultural law and drainage. So I got the phone call and they said, hey, could you look into this for us? I said, sure, let me see what I can do. So I got to looking into it and came across a lot of the same history that these guys did. And I said, oh yeah, there's an opportunity if, if there is interest among the landowners. So for the past three months, I've been working on this and we recently filed a petition to reactivate the district. But throughout the whole thing, I've been trying to meet and talk with everybody. So everybody's on the same page and has an idea on what's, what's going on and what, what the plan is. So I represent those landowners in that district.
So I'm sorry, just a quick clarification. So when you said that they asked you to look into it?
Correct.
They being?
They being Duke Energy.
That's okay.
So currently, Duke Energy has told these landowners in the district, hey, we're going to pay my fee to get the district activated. And then once it's activated, we're completely stepping out of it. We want nothing to do with it. They just want to try and be a good neighbor essentially. So. Yes, sir.
Does Duke Energy have land that they've leased already?
Yes.
And can you give us an approximation of how big the solar farm might be?
So I, I don't do work on their specialty use side. I just do the drainage side. From what I've seen through county, it looked like it was going to be, I read something in the newspaper, is, is I think it's three, twenty-five hundred acres, twenty-seven hundred acres. Something like that.
And is some of that land owned by people who you represent for the drainage district?
Some of it does overlap into both the drainage district and into Duke's new program.
But you were saying that, I'm sorry, you were saying that Duke's property itself is not impacted by the problems with flooding?
So some of the land that they're leasing is within the drainage district. But I have been told by their engineer that their additional drainage requirements are basically non-existent. So they're not concerned about drainage capabilities at all. So they really have nothing to gain from the drainage district as of Duke Energy themselves, other than just being a good neighbor in their community.
Who will.
Yeah. And, and from what I understand, they do, not, he laughed. He goes, this is the first time I've ever seen anything about a drainage district. But they do get involved in community projects, depending on where they go and what they're doing in different parts of the country. Yeah. And I can take questions or whatever, however you want to do.
Go ahead and do your presentation.
No, no, no. So yeah, and, and you know, the guy stole most of my thunder here. So I've got maps and some engineering for both the boundaries and the tile lines and the mains. So the drainage district, like we said, they, they originated as a Farm Drainage Act in about eighteen seventy, eighteen eighties. And these drainage districts started cropping up. The Coon Creek Drainage District started in nineteen fourteen in order to try and grain some of these lands and stop the periodic flooding. Then the last court filing from the first stint was in nineteen thirty-eight. And from the aerials that we saw, that thirty-nine aerial, the work had been done at that point. So at that point, it fell by the wayside and lay dormant. The drainage district was reactivated in the eighties to try and keep up and maintain some of these district mains and district ditches. And then fell by the wayside again until mid-two thousands when it was talked about, but not much was done. So the drainage districts are responsible for maintaining just the mains, the tile mains and the tile, and the drainage ditches. So think about it like a road. So they're responsible for the road, but all the long driveways that go off on the people's private property, those are the private owners. So all the drainage district does is gives them access, once they get off their driveway, to get on that road. And that's what those ditches and mains are intended to do. We have seen, because DeKalb County has been doing more ditch work, we are seeing the volume and the rate faster. Not necessarily faster than it's ever been. When everything was, was put in and straightened back in the, the early part of the nineteenth, the twentieth century, we were seeing those rates, but as things fill in, silt in, trees, everything kind of slows down. Then once somebody, we now have this bottleneck. So the district, we've talked to Riley Township and they've shown some interest in just, you guys showed on your old floor picture, Burma Road, I hear floods out, washes out every about ten years and they have to rebuild the road.
Yeah, if the drainage doesn't work, then you don't have a road.
Right.
I'm sure there was no road there till the drainage district.
Yep. So in, in the Coon Creek doesn't, and you can see it in the maps, the original map. So it, it meanders its way into the drainage district. And then right at about the start of Burma Road, it was channelized and brought up. And then you see that corner that you can see on all your aerials where you own the piece to the west. That was channelized and then channelized all the way out just east of Garden Prairie Road from Boone County. So the goal, and, and there's three commissioners that are head of this drainage district. Currently, when I originally started this project back in May, the thought was to have the court appoint three temporary commissioners until we had either an election or a county board appointment, depending on how many signatures we had gotten. There's an algorithm built into the statute, which is fairly archaic on how they, they do their algorithm. But so either way, those commissioners will either be elected or appointed. But the statute also calls that for the first Tuesday in September is either your election or your appointment. Because we're already in July and we've got thirty-day notices before any petition is heard, we elected to just let either the election happen or the county board appointment happen. And the judge will not make an appointment of the commissioners. So once those commissioners are either elected or appointed, their first order of business is to take a drainage inventory and, and walk, walk this district and figure out, okay, what do we have? What possible things can be done? Where do we see that we've got overgrown trees? Where do we have silt in problems across the district? And then to report back to the county circuit court in McHenry County with their findings. And then for the maintenance of these districts, the maintenance is done by a use assessment. And what they'll do, drainage districts do, they use a flat rate assessment per acre. And that money goes into a kitty to pay for the maintenance that's required. As part of the, the discussions with Duke Energy, they've talked about putting two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars down into an account to go to the drainage district should it be activated, to help them start with some of this maintenance work. And then the other two drainage districts that are currently operating in the county run anywhere from three and a quarter to three dollars and fifty cents an acre for their assessment, for the maintenance. But because of the way, you all know this, because of the way that the levy is applied and the fact the role is applied, they won't see any income for another year. It'll be twenty-two before any of that happens. And we're coming rapidly on the date where it'll actually be twenty-three before any of that happens. So that, that being said, it would take some time for them to be able to see any results. But they're, they're hoping that they can at least come up with a plan and start to put money away to maintain some of these items. Anybody have any questions?
So we're at in the activation process now. What, what do you, what do you have to do to get it activated?
Sure.
Are you, we are getting that accomplished?
So we've got to go back to the circuit court and ask them to reactivate it. The statute doesn't actually call for a reactivation. It, it doesn't ever think that that would be an issue that would have to happen. So what we use is the algorithm for original organization. So it's twenty percent of the landowners owning over a quarter of the land. And we do have that currently. The petition has been filed with the court and is set sometime next week. I'll appear before the court and discuss with the circuit clerk how we get the notice out to the people. So every landowner in this drainage district, all seventy-one hundred and twenty-eight acres worth, will get notice that this is, it's not brought before the court. And everyone will have their opportunity to voice their opinion in front of the court. From there, our petition asks that we reactivate the court, or we reactivate the district, that the court directs the voter or the levy role to be established. And ask for either the appointment of these commissioners by the county boards or to call a special election. It gives the court the option to do either. And then we would hope to see those commissioners sometime in September. And those three commissioners, because we are in a dual county drainage district, there will be two from McHenry. McHenry has about forty-one hundred acres in the district and the balance is left in Boone. So two of those commissioners will be from McHenry County, one will be from Boone County. And they'll initially take a one, two, three stagger term.
Have you, so when you get to the election process, has that been figured out as to how that works?
Not yet. I, I've yet to see.
Because I know they had difficulty in the past.
Yes. And, and that has been a concern, that was a concern raised with some of the landowners and why we get talked about going to an appointed district. Both the other drainage districts in the county are both county board appointed. Because it, it's a very different election in that it doesn't get run through the county clerk. It's not held on voting day. It's the first Tuesday in September between the hours of four and six, at one of the commissioners' locations, to be run by the commissioners. It's, it's a very odd collection. So, but I do have to call into the Illinois Association of Drainage Districts to see how other way down style, there's more elected style districts, to see what their protocol is to run their elections.
So tonight is just reinformation for us. Is there anything that you're needing from us? Because you've already had enough people sign the petition and you've already had enough land in there. You really don't need anything from us at this point. How is this more informational than anything?
Informational. And I, so I had a town hall meeting of sorts in Riley Township. And we, we had a lot of different discussions, some pro, some, and some just needing clarification. And I think that the best opportunity for everyone here is for the open communication. So that's why when I, I talked to Chairman and had the opportunity to come and speak with you, I thought that was a great opportunity. So, and you do own significant land in the district and we want to pull work together. So.
Thank you. So you said, in order to reactivate it, you have to have twenty percent of the landowners or a quarter, a quarter of the land that's approved in order to request that?
Yes, there's a couple of different ways that you can figure it out, the math. But the, the most common is it's twenty percent of, it's twenty percent of the adult owners owning more than one fourth of the land in the district.
So, Keith, what is the percentage of landowners that have signed on to this?
Percentage of landowners, I don't off the top of my head. Where, I remember correctly, last time I ran the numbers, it was just under four thousand acres.
Four thousand acres.
Just under.
And then, so my second question is, Duke Energy said they would give two hundred fifty thousand if this started. And that's correct?
They, they've had discussions that they would like to see not only the activation of the drainage district, but then to see us be able to do something. So let's talk about the money in a time.
Okay. So if, and you said that each acre would be taxed at three to three fifty an acre. So if at seven thousand one hundred twenty acres, that's almost twenty-five thousand a year. So they would be willing to donate almost ten years' worth of these funds.
And, and the thing is, there's four miles of open ditch or Coon Creek in this district. So in order to do maintenance on that open line, and this is something that those commissioners are going to be charged with initially, is to figure out what's that going to cost? What's realistically, what kind of work needs to go in there in order to maintain this and put it into a, a working order again, to try and combat some of the flooding. And because right now you've got numbers all over the board. Oh, it's going to cost two hundred fifty thousand. Oh, it's going to cost half a million. Oh, it would cost three million. And, and the thing is, until the commissioners have the ability to actually walk down the easement and check it and see what needs to be done and actually get it quoted, they're not sure of what, you know, everybody speculates. You know, they drive down Burma Road and go, oh my word, that's going to give us a bunch to do.
So just one last question. So they're doing all of this. So they're paying your fees and they're going to give two hundred fifty thousand just to be a good neighbor. They have, if this didn't happen, it wouldn't affect the.
Wouldn't affect your solar side. And from what I understand, they're continuing with their, their zoning requests for the special rules. Like I said, I'm, I'm out of that section of it. So, you know, I passed by the other train. He talks, how's it going? Good. How are you doing? Good. Okay, everybody's good then. So, yes, sir.
So this is a question for Ed and for you. Would it, is it likely that the drainage district would maintain the ditch to a higher standard than we are currently maintaining it? And by that, I mean it's going to be deeper. It's going to handle more water. We're, we're maintaining it at a certain capacity, fulfilling our obligations as we see them. Is it, is there something more that's going to be done once the drainage district is set up?
I'm just be kind of what I've read in the petition. So any additional information, fine. The petition calls for the maintenance of existing infrastructure and the. and the installation of new infrastructure. There's a paragraph in there that references both existing and new. So, and I think the term ditch can get confusing. There are a series of ditches that feed Coon Creek. Coon Creek is still a stream, a perennial stream. It's just been straight. So when we do, when we hear these terms, the, the overland ditches that feed it are a different animal than the actual ditch itself. And there will, even though there is a district in place, I'm sure there will be permitting issues. Because Coon Creek has extremely high muscle diversity. And so, you know, I think all of us are still learning an awful lot of information about it.
And that's, we've been, talked with McHenry County Stormwater. They had some discussion with them about what permits would be required from them for a project of this size. We've also discussed with, reached out to Harvey Court. And Heidi and I will also be another one that will be involved in a project of this size.
So at this point, you really would know how much further, how, how much, how big the improvements will be because that's not really decided at this point.
Correct.
And then, so then who does this then? I mean, I know you're saying you're going to get input from different agencies probably.
Well, and, and so that will come down to the commissioners that they have with the knowledge that they have from these different agencies of, okay, we know what it was originally when it, when it in 1914, up through 38. But can we get to that again? Or what other things that we need to do or change? Do we need to build habitat or, or anything else while we're doing these projects? The other thing was, back when they did show these, I've seen some original pictures when they were doing Rush Creek. The soil just pushed off the side, pushed out and left. You know, it was leveled off and left. And there's some question about what we do with the spoils, you know, what, you know, what's going to be allowed? Where can they be? How can they be incorporated? Can they be incorporated? So those questions are going to have to be answered a little bit later.
More questions? I think you have other.
Thank you very much. And if anybody has, you know, questions later on, I'm happy to talk to anybody. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you for all that information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's six point six, or six, yeah, six point one, six point one. Do you have anything else that you'd like to go back to? We're all good. So we'll have some further discussion of this next week. That brings us to, does anyone have anything they want to pull from the regular meeting agenda of next Tuesday that they'd like to talk about this night?
We'll be good.
All right. That brings us to bison grazing lease.
It's just going to be Brad and Brenna. And I do want to say ahead of time that there is quite a team that worked on this from natural resources and science and fleets and construction. But it really came up for, to put together the lease.
Yeah, that's understatement for sure. Do you want to press it here for this? It's good to meet you all in person. So obviously included in the board pack of this month was a draft of the conservation grazing lease at Pleasant Valley, which is going to be with Ruder Bison. And as you know, it's a unique and exciting opportunity for us. And the lease itself is unique in many ways as well. So, am I good to go? All right, great. First, this is a 15-year grazing lease with a farmer who is new to us. So there's a bit of trepidation, I think, on both sides. Negotiating the lease was a bit of a hurdle, but one that we've accomplished and can hopefully move forward with planning the next steps. The 15-year lease allows Ruder to reprove his costs over that time. But we're also hoping to develop a long-term partnership and continue to have Bison on the only escape for a long time. The terms of the lease include access to a total of 188 acres of ground, which is the area that was included in the original RFP. So Fields 2, 3, and 5 are currently in existing pasture. And Field 4 is in grow crop right now, but will be restored to native prairie this fall or winter after those crops come off. And the acreage in Field 4 then won't be ready to graze for a couple of years until the prairie has been established. So that acreage will be added into the payment schedule in 2024. And then the, the final acreage of Field 5 is a little bit of a question mark. Because until the fencing plan is finalized, because we probably don't want Ruder to fence across the stream for potential environmental concerns or potential restoration there. And he also doesn't want to, have to remove any trees. So once he gets his fencing contractors up there, it's a real good idea of what is going to be manageable. And we'll figure out how many acres.
I'm assuming none of the fences there is suitable for Bison.
So that's one of the things I'll mention is that we had to pull out all of the existing cattle fencing. He's going to be installing all.
Who's, who's taking out the previous?
It's already done, but we did.
We did.
Yeah.
Lynn Campbell did some of it.
That's right. Yeah. Hey, that was important work. Next slide please. And then Ruder will also be using one at the metal farms on the south end of the home farm for a corral and loading his Bison and for hay stores as well. Next slide. So the lease identifies that the primary, primary goal of the partnership is effective management of high-quality habitat for grass and birds. And so that's going to be achieved through a low stocking rate of Bison, rotational grazing between the fence pastures and vegetation and wildlife monitoring. Ruder anticipates that he'll be bringing in 10 to 20 Bison initially and grow the herd to about 40 over the first few years. The initial stocking rate will be one animal per two acres and will fall to one per three acres later on. And Ruder's plan is to utilize our property for raising immature Bison for meat production so that the average age or the age of the Bison will be between one and 30 years old. There won't be any mature bulls or breeding operations on site, which means they should be less than. Monitoring protocols will be established and implemented by staff. And we're also planning to study the effects of Bison on only escape through research partnerships. So our restoration staff and volunteers have been working to remove the old cattle fence, which was not sufficient for holding Bison, but really wasn't good for cattle at this point either. It was pretty, in pretty rough shape. And that process is pretty much completed at this point. Also, thank you again Lynn for coming out last week. We had a volunteer event and a few folks were helping roll the barbed wire and cut the metal away from the posts, so.
How many volunteers did we get?
I think it was just a handful. It was Thursday morning, so. And then our construction staff is also working on ensuring that the electric and water lines that are available to Ruder are functional because he's going to be hooking up to those to install electric to the new fence and for the Bison waters. So we've been able to use in-house labor and the expertise of our staff to reduce the outside contractual costs at this point, which is good. Once the lease has been approved and signed, Ruder will begin preparing the premises by, sorry, for the Bison by installing waters and electricity where needed and installing the fencing and corral system. So ideally, all of that work will begin once we receive board approval. But it does depend on the availability of its contractors and fencing materials. Unfortunately, it sounds like the fencing material was available earlier this year and now there's a little bit of question mark on that. But as soon as he has approval, he's going to hit the ground running. So if you did take a look at the lease, you might be surprised by the cost of rent or the lease income. So I think it's worth explaining that for this lease, Ruder will be paying $5 per acre for the acreage that he imposes in fencing. But he's explained, he's planning to expense a large sum upfront for that fencing, the corral system, and the water and electric costs. And so if we average out his anticipated cost of improvements to the property on a per acre and per year basis, he'll be paying about $40 per acre per year. And so Brad did pull the USDA National Act Statistics Report and the average rental rate for pasture land in McHenry County is $48 per acre. So we take the $40 and the $5 per acre, it's pretty well in line with the county average. The advantage of this agreement obviously is not income, but the ecological benefit of Bison as a grassland management tool and the opportunity for education, outreach, and research. Next slide.
If we hadn't gone with this lease and stayed in the cattle lease part of it, who would, if the fence was in bad shape, who would fix that fence then? Would, would we rent it or would we have to have to fix that fence?
That's a good question.
Yeah, they typically in the lease, if there's minimal maintenance or this new fence, we have to, we haven't had, we haven't gone, you know, go there yet because we're not building a lot of fence. But we actually did it as, as a few years ago on the cattle lease. And the best, Cheryl had it and he actually did it. So we talked about that at a lower rate. So it's, it's one of those things we use to trade off their labor for, for revenue.
Remind, what were we getting an income for?
We're getting right now it's 26, oh, 26 something an acre for our cattle lease. Okay, that Pleasant Valley. Oh, we have a lower stocking rate again for, for bird management.
Sure.
Thanks, Brad. And then I just want to also add, before we move on, this is fine. But there's also a cancellation provision in the lease that addresses the. So the provision states that if we were to terminate the agreement early, we have to reimburse Ruder for the improvements based on mutually agreed upon schedules. So that's 100% reimbursement if it's canceled in the first five years, 50% in the second five years, and 25% in the final five years. And the cost of improvement is surerated if Ruder terminates the lease himself or falls on his payments. And then when the lease expires, all of the improvements become our property. Sorry, thank you. Next slide. And then you'll remember that one benefit of the Bison lease is our desire community and provide educational programs to the public. So Ruder Bison will be working with us to provide a minimum of four public programs here. We are still developing how to, how best to accommodate public viewing opportunities and implement educational programs. So we'll be working with education and sites and leagues departments to identify the best plan moving forward. And as I mentioned, we're interested in potential research partnerships as well. And this is sort of just a fun graphic. But in addition to the ecological benefits of each opportunity, there's the added bonus of a local supply of pasture-raised Bison meat, which is apparently the perfect protein. It's a low-fat, low-calorie meat and a good source of iron and vitamins, if you believe this graphic. And then lastly, some of you may be concerned about how potential Bison escape will be handled. So we've discussed with Ruder the precautions that he's taking to prevent an escape, which include allowing the Bison to acclimate to the new pasture and holding cat off, installing the proper fencing, frequent monitoring of the fencing, and then using treats for positive reinforcement. And then, and as I mentioned, keeping young Bison in the herd.
Have they had any escapes and where were they at now?
One. He was telling me that he showed up to check on the Bison and it, there was a young male on the wrong side of the fence and no, no damage to the fence. So it's a bit of a mystery how he got out. But he was just pacing the fence trying to get back in, which is good. We've also met and discussed with staff from Nuchus Grasslands on how we can best prepare for a worst-case scenario like an escape. So once the fence has been installed and before the Bison are brought in, we are planning to meet with Ruder and the district police and staff response team to review the response and make sure everyone's trained on how to handle an escape. And then we're planning to invite our neighbors at Pleasant Valley to visit the property and make sure that they understand what's happening, keep them informed about our activities because I think we recognize that they'll be a valuable asset having their eyes and ears on the property in case anything were to happen. Next slide. Oh, this is my last one. So Ed, yeah, Ed mentioned this already, but I do just want to thank Val Siler, Adam Rex, John Peters, Chris Sanco, and many other staff that have been working to get this project off the ground. And that concludes my summary of the terms of the lease and the current status of the site preparation and our plans for the future. So I'm happy to do.
Is there a date that if we get past that, they won't bring anything until spring?
You know, I don't think that there's a limit necessarily. The Bison are going to be there year-round, so I, I don't think that he has to wait until spring. I think they could come in in the winter.
So he doesn't get sense, but so unless the weather gets bad, he can't finish building fence.
I suppose the other ground was frozen or something, yeah.
Because you said the fence supplies might be a little bit.
Yeah, so the latest update was that the fence supplies might not be available till later or in the fall. So, you know, if they can get that going, that would be great on that timeline. Bit of a question mark.
Any questions?
I have one. Field 4 that needs to be brought up to grazing specs. Who maintains that until it's ready to go?
Well, so once it's planted, there's not really much maintenance, I would say.
It'll probably be mowing every year somehow.
We probably typically initial mowing in the first year, once a month here. And yeah, we, we would do that. And that's the thing, they want to, we both want to use Bison as a tool, but we got to get it, get it very expanded.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Leading the property levy development budget. Hey, you're next.
All right, I need you to call us.
Well, Andy's getting set up here. One of the things that we hope through tonight is, we've done some preliminary thoughts since this is the first discussion that we're having on the 2023 budget. But as we wrapped up last year with approving the budget, we're always in a budget. Our goal is if, if tonight, if we don't have consensus on some of the items that at least by Tuesday night, we can revisit and have some general consensus on direction so we can allow the managers and directors to begin from their budget pieces together. So as you go through the presentation, you'll see some of that. And of course, it is a process, as you know, and for those that are new, we'll be back in front of you in September with the levy. And then we'll do our first preliminary in November of where things are looking. So it's an ongoing conversation. And next month, you'll see our full capital asset management plan, which will be part of the process.
I got one quick question with Bison. Ed, you're going to be riding then?
Yeah, that's my final retirement day.
Get a little cowboy hat.
Into the sunset.
Into the sunset.
Well, there's a lot to cover as always. Um, so I tend to try and move fast to get a steward. If I get going too fast, let me know. And I'll slow down. Um, as Elizabeth has mentioned, we have really two main objectives. One is to look at the 21 PTO levy that we've uh, issued this September, um, collecting fiscal of 2223. And then establish the basic budget goals for fiscal of 23 budget, which would be the personnel costs, the capital spending and determine any needed use of reserves. Um, and then we're going to look at the financial position that we project forward like we do every year from 23 through 25. Um, in the recent past, over the last several years, those projections are focused on looking at different levy alternatives. Whether we would take a full levy, a mutual levy, just capturing development, uh, no levy. Um, this year, the assumption is going to be that we're taking capturing a full levy. It's a minimal levy anyway. Um, and really the, the change in projection you'll see is about the corn industry because the price of corn futures is fluctuated by, I think, cash flow too. So looking at the 23 budget assumptions, the revenues. Um, again, this pie chart looks to save the last decade, eighty-two percent of the districts. We're talking about the general fund. This is the topic for today. This is, um, you know, as we know, drives the operations of the district. So property taxes make up eighty-two percent of the general fund revenue. And the other big revenue source is the property leases, which are largely the agricultural leases. Um, over the last nine years, the district's only effectively raised the PTO levy three times. Those are the green bars. You'll see there's actually a fourth green bar in 2018. Scott, the red around it. Um, that's because we did take a levy increase in eighteen and as you know, in nineteen, that bar is red, we had to turn it around and reduce that levy. So basically it's effective to neutral.
And we, we do have to point out that, you know, you're making that assumption that the board would vote for the, for us to take the maximum, but the board does not have to do that. And, and everybody needs to keep that in mind as we're going forward is to, if we do, at times we run into the family board or our chairman is not wanting to go along with that. And so we need to, I consider the fact that we do have to run this by the family board. We decide to take, well, we take the full levy, but then really it's the budget where they come in the line, but the budget and the levy should align with each other. At some point in time.
The levy has to be issued, you know, by September. So we have another really month to, you know, get into a deeper dive on it. Um, in, in the back of my mind, I think if we needed to, if there was a, a lot of concern about it, sort of expressed, I think we would look at the strategy we did for the 20 levy, which is you'd look to abate the increase of the debt service. Um, so that that impact to the taxpayer would be neutral. You know, if you let the referendum bond debt service levy grow like it's supposed to grow and we had a neutral PTO, that would be the same amount as taking the PTO and neutralizing that debt service. So that'd be just one, one option to consider if we head down with that.
Question if I may.
Sure.
So if we take the levy and we were to have a bar for 2021, what would that be?
We're going to look at that. Um, so by effectively taking those three levy increases, um, we'll see that uh, since 2011, we've collected sixty-nine million dollars in average annual increase of only eight cents of a percent um, versus what PTO would have allowed. If we take any full increase on the PTO, we would have gotten to seventy-six million dollars. Um, a difference of six point three million dollars that we forfeited by not taking that full levy increase. And just as importantly, if not more importantly, if you look at the 220 to last year, you see we have an additional levy capacity, single one-year annual levy capacity of one point one million dollars. Um, and obviously that would solve all the challenges the district faces today. So looking at the 21 levy, um, what can we do? So it starts with the 20 levy that we actually extended at eight million ninety-six thousand dollars. You see there's three levies there. They make collectively, they make up the PTO. We have a corporate levy, which drives the general fund. A social security levy, which also goes into the general fund because that's where our social security expenses exist. We don't have a separate fund for it. And the third one is the insurance liability levy. Um, and that really ninety-eight percent of that levy goes to pay the Pderma premiums of the district. So that insurance fund is really not near the budget, you know, we pay the Pderma premiums, that levy comes in and pays it. So there's not a lot of thought there. Um, but anyway, you take the three together, that's the PTO, we can grow it under the CPI, the rate of inflation from 2020, which is one point four percent. And by doing that, that's a total increase of just a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that we have to work with. So we take the CPI growth and inflationary growth of one hundred and thirteen thousand, and then you can add an additional estimated amount for new development of forty-four thousand dollars, which gives us a total increase of, of 2021 of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand and one point nine percent more than 2021. So though I'm not putting that bar back in, that would let you see that, you know, you have the eight point two million dollars plus the forty-four thousand for new development. So you'd be looking at a levy of eight million, two hundred, about sixty thousand dollars. If you went back to this one, well, I would, you see where it sits. Actually had that slide, I took it out because it's so long. Um, and then looking at the property leases that make up thirteen percent of the general fund levy. This shows the ag farm income, the green bars is the actual going back from seventeen through, um, twenty-two. And then the blue bars will be budgeted. And then the orange line is showing the corn futures, which is the December corn futures that drive that revenue. You can see from seventeen to twenty-one, the price of corn was pretty stable, right around four dollars uh, an acre, a bushel. Um, and then in twenty-two, it drove up to four fifty-eight. And we're getting about a million dollars of revenue based on what that corn's doing. Recently, however, corn's risen a lot. So this goes back to December of twenty and then projects forward the actual corn futures through seventy-five, I think it is. Um, I'm looking at December twenty-two corn and that will actually determine those lease rates. Uh, but obviously that's pretty far off. So I'm also showing the red line is May twenty-two, which is closer to that ten-month windmill. Um, when we actually set this, it'll be February looking at December, which is ten months out. So you can see it going from four thirty-two to five ninety, uh, makes a big difference for the district's revenue. Um, every twenty-five cents that it goes up is about sixty thousand dollars of revenue for the district. Uh, in twenty-two, we budgeted four fifteen, the actual was four fifty-eight. Uh, the average yield is one twenty-six. We have four thousand six hundred acres of actual crop leases. There's actually fifty-one hundred total ag, but in the corn and the crop leases are driving that revenue. For twenty-three, we're going to actually look at three different variations. One is four fifteen. If corn is at four fifteen, which is a three-year average. Um, we're going to look at what happens if it's four fifty-eight, because that's what it actually was for this fiscal of twenty-two. And then five dollars is kind of a representation halfway between December and May twenty-two corn. Um, I show the crop acreage going down a little bit. So part of that is acres have been taken out since the twenty-two budget was created. The other part is I reduced it another forty acres, um, in anticipation of this, that, uh, they would pull out another forty acres for restorations, possibly uh, in the Coon Creek area. But again, it gives a NRM forty acres to work with if you need it. As of June twenty-fifth, uh, is again showing the May twenty-two and December corn. And now just recently as of yesterday, that jumps from, you know, five thirty-one, uh, three weeks ago, now to five seventy or four ninety-four. And so this is a slide we just looked at. And so what we're going to do is project out then for fiscal of twenty-three, what happens if we're at four five dollars. And then you can see the revenue change would be a reduction of thirty grand plus sixty grand. Um, under program fee revenues, just pretty quickly here. In this one, I'm not just comparing it to the twenty-two budget. I'm also showing you the actual from twenty and twenty-one. As you look and see, the total program revenues are going up six point eight percent budget to budget. And that's because the twenty-two budget is coming off of that COVID year, which is pretty low. So while that six point eight percent may look a little aggressive, if you go back and look at the actuals that were pre-COVID from twenty twenty-one, um, you can see a hundred fifty-four thousand should be very manageable. Interest rates, we know they're down twenty-three, but there's assumptions on keeping the Fed funds basically at zero percent. Um, which means, you know, over that cash is getting just a few basis points. And then as I projected forward in twenty fiscal of twenty-four, I'm saying it's going to fifty basis points. And then in twenty-five, I'm saying seventy-five basis points. Um, anybody's guess whether this inflation thing is transient or how it's going to stay out, what the Fed's going to do. But, so I'm using pretty conservative numbers. For personnel expenses. Under wages, um, we're assuming there's going to be a three percent wage increase for all non-contractional and non-bargaining employees. Um, and then a three percent salary rate increase as well. Um, as you know, that's different than what we've done for the last many years, which has been really two percent across the board. And that's because inflation through June of this calendar year is up to four point three percent. Um, and if you look just at calendar years, that's the highest it's been in two decades. Um, and if you look at June of twenty to June of twenty-one, you're actually over five percent now for inflation.
You're only showing our, our taxes, our, our increase of revenue going up one point nine percent.
Correct. So that's this other little blue circle. It's interesting. Um, for twenty, this probably went up one point four percent. So our re-levy in twenty-one is based on calendar year twenty, and then we collect it in twenty-three. So it's, whether it's a three-year lag. Um, so what happens then, under this assumption, we're raising the wages three percent in fiscal of twenty-three, but that property tax increase is going to happen until fiscal of twenty-four, when you grab this twenty-one inflation, if that makes sense.
I follow that. It doesn't work very well.
No, it creates a bigger deficit in twenty-three. Um, and then quickly, we did a kind of a local survey of what other agencies were doing of wages. Um, not many are looking out to twenty-two yet, very fewer. So most of this, actually all of this is twenty-one. Um, you can see the majority are three percent and averages to about two point seven percent. Again, this is for fiscal year twenty-one for these part of these risks. Um, additionally, we have the four seven practice. And that's where employees, as they hit their seven-year anniversary, we look at the midpoints of their range, if they're not already there. Um, at their fourth year anniversary, we move them halfway between the mid and the mid, and the total cost of that is forty-five thousand dollars, about eighty-five basis points, eight tenths of one percent. Seasonal wages, we should work from twelve to thirteen, and that's just keeping pace with the Illinois minimum wage requirements.
Andy, I'm so sorry. I just wanted a clarification because in the notes that you, that were, that were sent in the board packet, it says an increase by three point seven percent. For wages and then non-contractual employees of three percent. What am I reading wrong?
I'd have to see the notes. It, it may be the total year-over-year you're going to see goes up three point seven. Or let's see here, one, two, three, next one.
I can't find the page enough.
Maybe get two, two more slides. I think.
It doesn't pay. I just wanted to make sure that I am understanding this correctly.
So in what we're, with the assumption right now is, is a three percent wage increase for non-contractual, non-bargaining tours.
Yeah.
And then what you'll see is if you look year-over-year, these other costs like this eighty, eighty, eighty-five basis points of eight tenths of a percent, takes that three and adds on to it. And there's some personnel requests that takes that three and adds on to it. When we get all done, you're going to see, I think it's a three point seven percent total wage increase year-over-year.
But it says wages, total wages are projected to increase by three point seven percent or.
Exactly. That's totally correct.
It's totally makes sense.
Awesome.
Um, for the one fifty bargaining employees, there's eighteen of them. Those are the rangers, assistant rangers, mechanics and maintenance positions. Their contract expires three thirty-one, um, twenty-two, so the end of this fiscal year. So all their current contract is me too language, decides what everybody else gets, they should get two. Um, all their contracts in the past have had that, and that's because we're committing in the contracts to relatively low income. It's been as low as one percent with a me too being if the board authorizes others to get more, they should get a two. So for this twenty-three budget, even though we don't have a contract, we're going to assume it's a three percent because that's the assumption for everyone else. Um, FOP, their contract dead, three thirty-one to twenty-three, so we're just going to follow the contract. There's a two percent annual raise for all the officers for fiscal year twenty-three, and they have additional increases as well based on their ten-year anniversary within the district. We have a couple of new personnel requests. Um, and then again, there's some reason the board packet, but the first one would be to take the, um, eliminate the part-time electrician position and change that to a full-time maintenance position. And that cost increase of that would be forty-eight thousand dollars.
Was doing electrical work then, once the electrician was gone.
We did a contracted out and also I think they're maintenance persons who have certified their jobs.
So is that figured into this increase or we're still going to have electrical problems? So I assume we're going to have to hire somebody in from time to time to get.
Is, is it, what's your question, Doc?
My question is, okay, you have an electrician now and you're not going to have an electrician, you're going to have a maintenance person. So if, if nobody in maintenance does electrical work, you have to hire somebody in for electrician. Is that figured into this?
It is, it is not. That is absent from that. It's about a buck fifty raise or, or difference. So when you take that, that's, what is that, uh, two thousand and eighty buck fifty? So you're talking about maybe thirty-five hundred dollars more, I think. Now, the person is not certified. If they do get certified, then we can go through the process of looking to promote them to this new position.
So we, we could still do the same amount of work in-house then? Because what I'm saying is if you hire this person now, you have to hire somebody outside the company to do the electrical work that's been done by, or if you have to do more electrical work.
If it's outside the scope of what our.
What our people can do, yeah, then we would be doing that. And there is times that we do that, Doc.
Right. No, I assume. I was just wondering if, if all costs are included in this, this change or if there's anything else out there.
I, I think that, uh, that thirty-five hundred dollars that I'm saying should probably be extra cost that we'd be talking about. But everything else would be normal. I mean, there are things that are going to be outside the scope of what, what, uh, you know, we can handle and we can hire an electrician too.
And what I've always done here, Doc, is just try to show you the wages year-over-year. So this is just the impact of the wage cost of this personnel request. Which will answer the other question of how we use it, a few point seven percent. Um, and then currently the accounting team has a seasonal person who's anywhere from a hundred fifty to two hundred hours a year, usually in the fall and the spring. Um, we'd like to bring in, make that position a part-time, uh, accountant assistant. Um, it would be about eight hundred hours a year. Um, and the cost for that would be fourteen thousand four eighty, the net increased cost. So the seasonal would go away and the part-time accounting assistant would come on. Um, and then you guys have already approved this change. This was the Littner, Reor kind of where the data mix manager position was eliminated. The G I S specialist went from part-time to full-time. Uh, the net savings of those two was forty-three thousand dollars. So again, that's going to be a change from the twenty-two budget to the, to the twenty-three. So all those personnel requests together, um, the total cost is nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars as a net increase. And then getting to the total wages, I would take all those assumptions together. You'll see the total budget of wages for twenty-two are five million five thirty-five. They would go up to five million seven hundred forty-one thousand and increase to two hundred six thousand or a three point seven percent. Uh, under the health insurance, we switched to the IDBC this calendar year generally first. We locked in the raise for eighteen months. I'll take it through six thirty of twenty twenty-two. I'm projecting a four percent race increase then from seven one twenty-two to three thirty-one twenty-three. Um, and then as we look at the assumptions going forward, I'll take that same four percent through the next two years as well. Um, something that's adding to the cost of the insurance beyond the rate increase is that if you look at the twenty-two budgets, um, when we, when we develop that versus where we are actually today, you're going to, we see a shift where we have um, thirty employees that are taking single car, just down by three, and that has shifted into more expensive plans. So employee plus spouse or child or family. Additionally, uh, the twenty-three budget, based on what's actually on the books today, these personnel changes, we'd see an additional two people enrolled. And part of that's because you've had a lot of turnover. So we had some people leave who had waived the district's insurance and some people come on to take it on. So the total budget across of the health and dental for twenty-two was nine hundred fifteen thousand dollars. The four percent premium increase would be twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, two additional lives on the average would be twenty-six thousand dollars. It's about thirteen thousand dollars per employee. Um, and then there'd be thirty-six thousand dollars related to the plan changes when you take three people who had single and you start moving them to the more expensive plans. So collectively, that's a total cost of ninety-one thousand dollars for twenty-two or a ten percent increase in total health insurance cost. Higher required contribution rate. So I have reference from lease fair rate for calendar twenty-two, which is our fiscal year twenty-three. It's going down to ten point eight eight. Um, that's an estimated savings of twenty-six thousand dollars. And then if you look year-over-year, then budget to budget, we see a total benefit increase of three point nine percent. Um, as we look at personnel as a percentage of total operating expenses in twenty-two was seventy-eight point, seventy-eight point one percent. Um, as we look at personnel as a percentage of total operating expenses in twenty two was seventy eight point, seventy eight point one percent. Under these assumptions, it stays seventy eight point one percent because we're add, we're also growing the other operating the same percentage. So the newer denominator aren't changing there. So we, we wouldn't see that change. Um, and then this we looked at before from fiscal year thirteen to twenty two, just showing that percent. Of personnel to total operating expenses. We see it trending up. Uh, again, a lot of that is we've had the restricted revenues for property tax limitations. Um, so we've had to reduce non-personal expenses, so that changes the ratio disproportionately. And again, if we add it fiscal year twenty three, it would stay at seventy eight percent.
It must go up a, a percentage of, of revenue.
What's that?
It would go up as a percentage of the revenue. At least at the tax dollars, you don't. The tax dollars are only growing at one point nine percent.
Uh, it depends on what the farming stuff, so.
Well, I know. So you're coming out of the, the price of corn, the whole over five dollars to make up the difference.
Um, in comparison, we've looked at this before too. The slave county forest preserve, they show a, uh, total person, their total salaries and benefits of seventy four percent. It doesn't include the higher market social security. That's labbed into a different fund. Um, I'm making estimates here, very conservative estimates. Um, if we add on an estimated higher market social security, it would bring that total personnel cost up to sixteen million. Um, and then bring their total personnel to operating with seventy seven point five percent. So very similar there. Uh, under the forestry, DuPage Forest Preserve District, they're at seventy two percent. If we add an estimated higher market social security on the bat, it brings it up to seventy five percent. Um, this is something I showed you before, but I, I didn't show you this piece of it. Down at the bottom, um, of that budget, it shows continued choosing reserves of a million dollars. Um, so that looks like they're setting aside a million dollars for anything that might come up, which is a pretty big number for the budget. But if you back that out of the total, then that would drive their personnel to operating up to seventy seven point six percent. So again, you know, very similar to the district. And then just one last comment on that. We've always looked at this in proportion to what's being paid from revenue. So we didn't include the capital that's being paid from reserves. But if you look at the personnel's total expense of the total budget, including the capital, even though they're not funding from revenue. That would drive their personnel expenses down to seventy four percent. Because then capital would make up four point eight percent of it. And again, most other agencies have lots of different funds for this capital thing, so it's kind of hard to compare. Um, it would be similar than twenty three because again, we're growing the personnel, the same, approximately the same as the other operating expenses. And then lastly, for the other operating expenses, generally we're showing them growing to rate of inflation of three percent or a little less inflation. In these assumptions, I did, um, look at the fuel usage, look at where the fuel costs were based on the twenty two budget and we goes by nine point three percent on twenty three. We know legal's way either, so I just, uh, grew that by thirteen percent. Everything else right now is three percent across the board. Obviously, that's going to change as the managers start building their actual budgets. Um, and then for twenty four and twenty five, I used a two percent inflationary, really get two percent across the board. We know with sets a lot in, um, we haven't allowed the department managers to increase their budgets at all, so they absorb twenty percent of, of the inflationary cost. Um, and then they, we actually had to reduce it twice. We're proposing for this budget, we have allowed them to grow those budgets one to two percent. Um, and then the other one percent we'd use to offset things like fuel, they're going to grow at a higher rate. And to give you an idea of what those other operating expenditures are, they're really non-discretionary for the most part. Um, so you can see from this first column, the property tax, waste disposal, utilities. We had, um, total seven hundred twenty thousand dollars. So that's really nothing anybody has a lot of control over. You look at the maintenance costs of the twenty two budget of five hundred thirty two thousand, that's one point two million dollars. So that's sixty percent right there, the total other operating cost. Um, then you get into some of the operational specific needs, things like feed for the animals and supplies for programs. Um, again, they're really non-discretionary. If you reduce these or take them down, the service of program has to get reduced to go away. Um, so collectively, that's one point seven, eighty percent of those total other operating. So again, very little real discretionary that that two percent is going to go to. Um, and then this just shows the other operating in the budget versus what would happen if we took the actual and grew it into the C P I. And again, you know, this is what we've had to do to offset those reduced revenues. Um, so you'd see if it had grown by inflation, you'd be at, you know, two point seven million of other operating expenses. And the twenty three budget right now, we're showing even with a three percent increase, just two point one, almost a seven hundred thousand dollar difference. And again, that's part of the reason it's dragging up the personnel expense as a proportion of the total budget because this other operator is going down and held down. So then, uh, again, year over year, twenty two, twenty three, under operating expenses going up three point eight percent. Under the capital outlays, um, we did sell off the detail of everything. I, I forget what else just last night at the table for. I'm apologizing. So when I had four to do, I took the twenty two total capital of five hundred, oops, of four hundred some thousand dollars and projected it forward. Um, you're going to see some updates now using this, these actual capital numbers. Everything, uh, there is five hundred ninety four thousand dollars of items that were requested. We reduce that down to three hundred five thousand as all the proposing would be funded in the twenty three budget. All of that's replacement other than Littner is one A T V, which would be in addition to that fleet for fire suppression. And if anybody has any specific question, you could answer. So this shows the capital outlays by funding source. So in the past, going back to fiscal year thirteen to twenty three. Um, the green shows the amount of capital we could fund from revenue. The blue shows what was funded from reserves, and then the beige colored bar shows just the total of those two combined. Um, you can see going back to thirteen, more than half of the capital was funded from revenues. And then as those property tax levels started getting restricted to be neutral under reduced. Um, you see that green bar get very small and the beige bar growing quite a bit. Um, now for fiscal year twenty two, we didn't have any capital coming from revenue. It's all funded from reserves. And again, that's proposed the same for fiscal year twenty three. So looking at the budget projection, this is the fiscal year twenty two budget, general fund budget summarized. Um, we have a five hundred eighty thousand dollar deficit, which includes four hundred eighty four thousand dollars of capital. So now a ninety six thousand dollar operating deficit before capital. If corn's at four fifteen, and with all these assumption, assumptions we have just looked at. Uh, you see a net deficit, operating deficit of three hundred forty six thousand dollars. And then if we had that level of capital, like grow it by three percent. That deficit would grow to eight hundred forty five thousand dollars. Don't panic yet. It's a little better. Um, if corn's at four fifty eight, then again, you see that operating deficit at two hundred forty four thousand. And then after capital, seven hundred forty three thousand. And to just to show that there's some consistency here, so back, you know, every year as we're looking forward. This is the projection I presented in July of nineteen, as we were considering reducing the nineteen levy and what the implications might be. Um, and whether or not as we went forward in twenty, we could take the full levy and all those. So in this scenario, scenario one, it aligns very closely with what we're, you know, what we did with the levy in nineteen and what we did with the levy in twenty. Um, and you can see back in nineteen, as I projected five years out and got to fiscal year twenty three. It's very, very similar to what we're now showing with the fiscal year twenty three budget to look at. Um, the one place we see a pretty big difference is in the other revenues. That's going to include your program revenues, which obviously COVID wasn't in the works, so, you know, we estimate those to be a bit higher. Um, but everything else is, you know, really with one percent. And it's not to say there's been a lot of changes. We know positions have changed, but. Um, you know, generally to that ten million dollar budget, it's, it's, uh, come right on. So then lastly, if corn goes to five dollars, uh, we see those deficits come way down. I shouldn't say goes, if it, you know, if it stays as high as it is, and you get to lock something that high in February of next year. Um, you see the deficit at one forty three and then with capital, six forty three. So the other thing that I haven't shown you, what I gave you ahead of time. Is that was taking the capital from fiscal year twenty two and projecting it forward. The actual capital we're looking at now is only three hundred five thousand. So if I add that difference back in, one hundred ninety three thousand to all those scenarios, because we're not going to, if we go with this capital, it will be four ninety nine, it will be just three hundred five thousand. I'm going to add that back in. And the other one is, if you look back over the last five years. The average favorable budget variance of expense has been about five percent. So I'm going to add just half of that in. So I'm just taking two and a half percent of the total expenses and add it back in, assuming we're probably going to have at least that as a figure of the variance again. And when we do that, then we see the deficit after capital of three hundred ninety thousand, four hundred twenty eight, four forty nine. Um, again, you know, s- still a reserve spending, but you know, half of what we were budget, what we're in the current budget here for twenty two. Questions, comments? So as we project that forward, um, just quickly to go through the assumptions. Expenses and revenues are basically twenty two budgets. Uh, expenses and revenues are casted for all three scenarios. So the only thing we're changing is the current future price. Uh, the assumption again is that a full levy is taken in all three years, twenty three through twenty five. Under the revenues, um, the property tax revenue, we're showing two percent in twenty three, three point six in twenty four, because this is where you capture the bigger inflation from this calendar year. And then in twenty five, we're assuming it's just two percent again, plus food development. Interest income, self-explanatory goes down in twenty five because we're spending reserves through those deficit spendings. Um, total program revenues, uh, again, a big increase in twenty three, two percent each year after that. Bar leases, I'm pulling out forty acres each year to allow for restoration. Maybe that doesn't need to happen. Another income I'm just showing at two percent in two years. The assumptions for, uh, the personnel would be the wages at three percent for twenty three and then two percent for twenty four and twenty five. And again, that's the assumption that the inflation starts to level back down to two percent. Four seven costs are projected forward. So we're taking every, all the tenure and moving it forward for three years. Union contracts are projected forward, health insurance at four percent. All of their expenses increased by three percent in twenty three and then two percent in twenty four and twenty five. Capital outlays, so again, I started with twenty two, grew it by three percent and then two percent in twenty three and twenty four. Um, and then as we do that, looking at corn, if corn was at four fifteen of Bushel, we're holding that number constant through all three projected years. Uh, you see the first year deficit of eight thirty seven and then growing to nine hundred nine thousand by twenty five. If I add, add back in that reduced capital and then an assumed, uh, favorable expense variance. We see a deficit of three ninety, um, growing to four forty nine. You see kind of a big jump between years twenty three and twenty four, and that's again, because you're waiting for the P T L levy to catch up with inflation. And really the twenty four to twenty five is really going to be the normal going forward, where it grows about twenty thousand dollars a year. So not a big growth in deficits, pretty stable. Whereas in years past, we'd seen that grow sixty and a hundred thousand if we projected it forward. If corn's at four fifty eight, held constant, um, you see again, adding back the, the capital and the assumed favorable variance. Uh, deficit of two eighty eight and growing to three forty six. If corn's at five, the deficit's only one hundred eighty seven and grows to two hundred forty seven thousand. And then just to summarize those projections for scenario one, two and three. The one thing we haven't talked about. If we're projecting that the end of this fiscal year will have six point two million dollars in fund balance and reserves at the top. So we would start with that and we'd reduce it from the general fund operational deficit of, of three ninety, four twenty eight, four forty nine in scenario one. So from twenty three to twenty five, we did a total spend of one point two million dollars. The other piece of that though is the camp. So this six point two million dollars, that's all the fund balance. Um, so from that, you will see next month, um, the three-year camp projection is two million eighty four thousand dollars for the next three years, about seven hundred thousand dollars a year on average. So if we back all those out, um, you see entering reserves going from six point two to two point nine million. Still well above the two point six percent minimum reserve balance in scenario one. Common scenario three, again, if corn was at five or better, you're looking at ending reserves of three and a half million dollars, um, above the two point six million, twenty five percent reserve. And again, that's based on the assumption there's a reduced capital spend and a favorable expense variance. And then just one last slide. I took that and projected it through twenty seven, because fiscal year twenty seven will be, um, the last year before the twenty six levy. Where we have the potential increase because of the debt service levy going away. So in twenty five, the debt service levy goes away, and that's the levy that's captured fiscal year twenty seven. Fiscal year twenty eight, if we're allowed a referendum or some type of operational increase, fiscal year twenty eight would be, you're going to be able to grab it. So if you take the ending deficit from twenty five and I roll it forward in twenty six and twenty seven. Um, I roll a camp spend for the next two years. Then you see a total, um, spend for twenty three through twenty seven of three million eighty four in scenario one. And then I bring your ending reserves down to a million dollars. I reduce that minimum reserve at fifteen percent or one point seven million. Again, there's nothing that says we have to twenty five percent. We've talked about reducing it now. I think going below that would make it difficult and challenging for the district. Um, if we didn't have to go lower to manage cash and everything else.
Saying go below twenty five percent or below fifteen?
Below fifteen. The other thing too is if, let's just say the scenario played out. So you get into fiscal year twenty seven. And you're down to one point seven million and you can't get a referendum for whatever reason. You can't vote it, you know, it's just not the right time. Having a million sudden in the bank would allow the district several years to have a plan and implement that plan without really running into, you know, uh. A mid, a firestorm with a heavy wreck right now. So you can continue, you know, for a year or two with that same operation, that's safe to continue some camp spending. Um, it'll, it would allow us to have a plan and then run. Um, and again, in scenario three, if corn stays at five or better, you know, we'd do well above that fifty percent, even taking the salary out to two thousand forty seven. And that is it.
Just one quick question. So you, there's no policy about how much reserves have to be, have to stay in there?
No, we don't have a policy with, with a guideline, which has been twenty five percent. The other, you know, as you, as you look back at the COVID crisis and the impacts of it, had very little impact on the district. Um, in fact, our reserves grew, you know, as, as we came out of that. Um. So it's really, you know, for the district, it's really to help manage the cash flow, one of the biggest reasons to try and maintain that. And the other thing too is, you know, if you started reducing services and programs and all of that, you just don't, you still have this reserve bank. Um, and it's, you know, the taxpayers are going to lose the service and the program, the reserves are still sitting there. Um, so again, the, the concept of using those, if you built them up over time to allow programs, services to continue. Um, especially until we get to that two point six levy and or left for another.
Kelly, I have a question for you. I don't, I don't think the counties helped you this far along, but they talk about, uh, budgeting for wages. On a county level yet, what have we talked about in the, in increase?
Not yet.
Yeah, I thought we were probably ahead of that.
Right, yeah. And the reason why I asked about the reserve policy is because at the county, you have a five-month reserve policy. It used to be six-month reserve into five. So fifteen percent here, uh, it's kind of hard. It, this is different than, than the county. Cause you guys could reduce services and really couldn't do.
Well, the, the other, uh, the county has only about fifty percent of their revenue relies on tax dollars. So a lot of it's much more volatile, where the district, you know, eighty-two percent of ours is tax dollars, it's, it's just not going to go away. Um, a lot of people, you know, all the park district, open space agencies, when COVID hit and they started losing all those other revenues. They were hurt big time. I mean, they had to rely on service and they lost the chain. So the, the district, um, I, you know. Twenty five percent is, is a very high, comfortable place to be. And I think fifteen percent is, is pretty usable. Now, I'm not suggesting that therefore we should burn them down. I'm just saying, you know, this is one scenario that, that would still be reasonable to be.
And I'm not disagreeing with this. I'm just trying to compare the two. So this is mutual.
Andy, can you explain the camp spending a little bit for me?
So what we've talked about generally, knowing that there's no camp, um, funding source, there's no revenue.
What is camp in the center?
Oh, I'm sorry, capital asset management plan.
Okay.
So that's a separate fund and it's, and it's looking at the large-scale projects of the district, road replacement, parking lot replacement. Um, you know, major things having to do with the trails and the sites. All of their regular routine vehicles, roofs, uh, maintenance type capital things, that's all happening with general fund. So the camp really, we're looking at things typically twenty, twenty five thousand or more with a, you know, a longer life expectancy. Um, general fund would capitalize anything with a year or more life expectancy. The camp would be really typically five, ten, fifteen years or longer. Um, so, so within that, you'll see in August, I'll bring it forward for the camp fund. So, so within that, you'll see in August, I'll bring it forward for the camp fund over the next three years of two point one million dollars, I believe. Yeah, two, two million eighty-four thousand, which would be all the projects of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, putting that camp on the general fund. After this fiscal year, if all the dollars that are budgeted in the camp gets spent, there is no more fund balance in the camp. So this six point two million dollars in the general fund becomes, you know, the total reserves available for both the general fund and the camp fund.
I have a question. So how many non-contractual and non-bargaining employees do we have? Oh, your proposal is to raise the wages and salary by three percent for non-contractual, right, non-bargaining employees. Is that every district, is it ten percent?
You have, you have eighteen bargaining employees who are members of the one fifty, that's the rangers, the maintenance mechanics. You have ten officers, eight officers, two sergeants, so ten in the police group, so that's twenty-eight bargaining employees. I believe the full-time staff in this budget is seventy-three, so seventy-three minus twenty is fifty-three, minus eight is forty-five. So you'd be looking at forty-five. Now, the other reality is that eighteen in the one fifty, the eighteen employees in the one fifty group, they would get the same three percent.
Right.
They're not contractually, but, but chances are, if we build a contract, that's what it's going to be.
Can I comment? I'm comfortable with taking the PTO levy. I think we avoided that, we've been very brutal and prudent perhaps at the point where that's a reasonable thing to do. I'm not comfortable with the three percent salary increase. This has been a very strange year economically. COVID, response to the government, it's a worldwide situation. The issue of inflation is impossible to forecast.
Three percent for years, dude.
So I'm uncomfortable with a three percent salary increase. Salaries never go down, they only go up. The price of corn fluctuates, the price of used cars fluctuate, inflation, it's a combination of lots of things. If you have, it's a self-fulfilling proposition though, once you start automatically increasing income. No one was laid off during COVID. Many of our employees, I suspect, benefited from a stimulus program. I think we have a very solid pay structure and benefit program. So I'm going to push against an across-the-board three percent increase. Two percent is fine, from my personal perspective. If you feel you need to raise the non-personal expenses by three percent as opposed to two percent, I perhaps could accept that. I would prefer something like two and a half percent. And I recognize that all of this is for budgeting purposes. And, you know, actual contracts and purchase agreements play out sometimes differently than how they're budgeted. But I prefer to be less generous in our wage and salary and more careful in our non-personal, non-personal expenses. I looked at some numbers, and at one point, projected out the consumer price index from twenty-one over twenty was only one point four percent. It certainly is going to be higher, twenty-two over twenty-one, and perhaps even twenty-three over twenty-two. But I think we need to see how that plays out and sort of not anticipate contribute to inflation by how we set up our budget.
Okay, thanks. I have to agree with Bill. We're looking at, you know, potentially a five hundred thousand dollar deficit. We already signed up a contract, at least a two percent raise. I think if we, I think we should be at two percent also with whoever wants. That's where I would go, I think it would be consistent. Done, we're only looking at a one point nine percent increase in our tax dollars coming in. I think that would be two percent, that's in with everything else. That's where I would go. Let's have a comment, but it's fine. Comments on anything else, doesn't have to kill stuff in ways.
Well, we're going to have to obviously move back further, and we're not making the prior decisions.
But they're looking for some direction.
Correct. And then there's a lot that can change between now, so as far as where our coordinates are. And, and I do appreciate the conversation, and it's worth putting out what we're hearing, we know things are different. I do know, and of course, for us to come forward with a three percent much thought was given to that, and I respect what the limitations and challenges were with COVID, and we've understood that. I think we've seen other things happen around us, and we've held, we've done the market studies, we've held employees back to where other units of government were doing more on a annual basis, and so our employees didn't think, did not do that. We don't have a paid for performance program here to offer some of that, so I don't know if the board would be open in some of those options to look at other ways too, for non-contract, you know, non-contractual employees as, as ways to other things. And there's a lot of ways to, to get creative. The other thing that's out there, or just to get a feel, and we're going to go into after this, some positions. And we've been very conscientious about adding new positions or adjusting to where the needs are. And positions become open, we reevaluate, and then we assess. So according to this budget, we are proposing the maintenance position, which I've got a little program, we're a little bit more in a position of summary of why that position is important, and we'll get into what we can do potentially to elevate that based on some other scenarios that we have some concerns about. Or the option is we pause and we don't do anything, and we hold those positions open and start them, you know, into the public. So we'll get into that. But I, and then the part-time accountant, that was added to this budget too. So for twenty twenty-three, those other discussions are twenty twenty-two. So any thoughts on that, or from what your feelings are about what's proposed to twenty twenty-three?
So you're going to go into the personnel requests now for twenty twenty-three, the part of this agenda, or feel they're uncovered?
Well, it's uncovered. I just got a little bit more to, to more clarity. I think Andy did a great job with the numbers.
Yeah, I didn't try and give the merits of.
Of why? I'll give you the why.
I assume that was coming next.
I have a second question. So in your budget, Andy, when you proposed this, did it include these new personnel requests?
Yes.
I think that's on, it's at three point seven.
Is that, that?
Yeah, so the, the main, the two new things are the change, getting rid of the part-time electrician we talked about, going to the full-time maintenance person, and then taking a seasonal accountant from two hundred dollars to eight hundred dollars basically. And then, again, Lipton had changes that we already approved that weren't in the twenty-two budget, so it represents a change in the twenty-three budget. And the cost of all those things combined is that not nineteen thousand dollars. But I guess that would be, you know, one, is everybody okay with that for the twenty-three budget?
I don't have a problem at all with those personnel recommendations.
And that changed about twenty thousand.
Right. The general capital spend, we're showing the three hundred thousand dollars, but it's like, that's okay. There may be a couple other things that come on, but, you know, I don't think it's a big.
And you added too, but I don't want to mix, because we're talking general fund tonight. There's another, just so there's clarity, the twenty twenty-three, there's a recommendation, which I'll go into, which is out of the special revenue fund, which is separate from the general fund, but taking a habitat tech and then converting that into, eliminating that position and the oncologist's position. But that's not out of general fund funds, that's out of special. So we're trying to bring a lot of lanes here, and we wanted to keep it as possible.
Here, we're done with questioning on six point three, and we're going to move on to six point three eight. That doesn't mean we can't circle back. Question later.
Also, one other question. Do we do a contract, forward contract, you know, fuel, our energies, or anything like that?
When you said contract.
Forward contract.
Uh, well, the electricals has been out.
Fuel, fuels.
Um, the fuel delivery is, it's tied to the market rate though, so we, we gotta rebid off the delivery cost of that. But then you're paying whatever the market rate is.
You can't pass that, can't forward.
You never look to.
Thank you for the discussion on all of that, and a lot to ponder as we go forward. So just Andy gone over the twenty twenty-two request, and so I just want to highlight these really quickly. The operations and public safety division, and as you see the requests, and here I'm going, well, I'm going to go back here on twenty twenty-two, so going up to what's happening this year. So let me to the budget, it's around twenty twenty-three, and then I'll go back to where we are this year. So, so my apologies. So we're going to talk about, with the budget, we talked about administration and finance, which was a conference, just to look at the headcount, which was in the report. They've been operating now in the accounting department, or two point one full-time equivalents, with an accounting supervisor, accounting assistant, and a seasonal, and of course, Andy, and so it's a very small department. And that's where we're mapping twenty twenty twelve to twenty twenty-three, and the reason is twenty twenty twelve was right before our reorganization. We did a reorg. We realigned some things for efficiencies and effectiveness and, and operations. And so this team didn't change as much as the other divisions, but it's been pretty consistent. And so, as you see, there's really not much growth, but when you look at the reason why, they've got excessive workloads. We've been looking at time not optimist or time for team members, and, and they've got critical workloads as a small group that there's no choice but to get them done. You're unable to take time off, and, and they have to do what's necessary. So accuracy, meaning financial reporting. And there's been just a, a great increase for GASP guidelines, purchasing protocols. We've automated the payroll processing, grant compliance, and all those things take time for a small team to really make sure. And again, the team does an excellent job. Obviously, the CAPR shows the amount of detail efforts that go into this. So to really be effective, we'd need to eliminate the seasonal, add the part-time accounting assistant, and then this would be effective April first of next year out of the general fund. And again, we saw that it's named, so this is very important, what the increase would be. Under the natural resources management, in the natural resources management department, they too have been continuing to look, they went as a reorganization, and that's where we shifted into a director of land preservation and natural resources. Their headcount is remaining the same at eleven to eleven, and this is not encountering the whole land administration, land preservation, natural resources department. This is only the group that works directly under Brett Woodson as our natural resources manager. So we've made some changes. We didn't have a natural resource program, project coordinator, now we do. We used to have four ecologists, four technicians, we moved those all to restoration ecologists, so they repair it and work during how they did things. What's proposed is the elimination of the habitat tech. And of course, we've recently gone from what was an agricultural services coordinator that used to be in operations and public safety, or wasn't public safety, but kind of was operations, and now it's the agriculture ecologist. So again, headcount stayed in that group the same. The proposal is to eliminate the habitat tech, add the new position of the restoration ecologist. This would be also effective April first, and it's out of the natural resources special revenue fund, doesn't hit the other. And again, we know that there's more acres to manage, and this is the recommendation coming from that team to do so. We did challenge some other opportunities, and in our discussions, this is being proposed, and I'd like to share all perspectives, is, you know, with the other positions that we did have, we did have some more entry-level positions. I mean, that was the whole goal of the habitat technician position, was to allow an individual to come out of school, be employed for a couple of years, and then leave the district and then, and then bring new area. But what they're finding and where the efforts are needed is the case that the, what they're doing in the management is that patience is the ecologist position. And it's on the special revenue fund, so that money has been. We saw the increase on that, out of that, and that was in the budget, I'm almost expect. So total summary was to add those positions into the next year's budget, unless it's any direction. Again, there's still time, but that budget was forward, but that's the direction that's been built into what's been presented. Let's go into where we are currently. So we want to talk about operations and public safety and marketing and education. And the reason why these are being discussed is because the, the facilities maintenance supervisor or the maintenance facility worker is included in the twenty twenty-three budget, though we have an opportunity, or we have a situation as well, that we have some individuals that are going to be out on leave. And so that is why we're even bringing this conversation to you, to potentially start this earlier than April first. And it's to circumvent some situation that we think might be problematic for the district and to be proactive. The operations and public safety team in twenty twenty twelve, the, you could see how we were broken up. We had a land facilities manager, a facilities maintenance supervisor, facility maintenance workers, and a lost valley visitor center ranger, giving a total of five point five full-time equivalents. And then into twenty twenty-two, this year, we've got one maintenance manager, no supervisor, three workers, and then one lost valley visitor center ranger. So that's one pair, and they're all part of the local one fifty, left department group, with the exception of the manager. What we are proposing here is to eliminate the part-time electrician, like that was discussed before. To eliminate the seasonal, we haven't been able to hire seasonal. Um, to eliminate the seasonal, uh, we haven't been able to hire seasonals this year uh, due to COVID and just finding qualified applicants. I guess unemployment's been more lucrative than than working, so that's been uh, challenging for us. Um, we do know the team members are gonna be out on half a mile and leave. So that's our reason why, uh, if we don't go forward, projects will continue to be behind schedule. Um, they'll either need to be shifted to another team member, suspended or contracted out. Um, you know, some example, our HVAC or other systems, or we just won't get to that. So so that is a concern that's been expressed. And the only reason why I was bringing this forward in not to connect these, because I don't wanna put division in division against one another. However, when the district has positions that are open, it provides an opportunity to reassess and look at things. But um, what we're able to show here, um, uh, before I go there. Okay, um, the marketing and education team, just and then I'll do a summary. The marketing education team, um, they've got, they went from having an education services manager, which we still do. Uh, we moved one of the coordinators to an education business center coordinator. Um, three program coordinators to to one program coordinator, two assistants and one outreach program coordinator. So we had seven and during fiscal year 2012, when we made the reorganization, we eliminated one of the education positions out of that team, so they've been doing it with less. And um, so they're down one. So what we're, what's happening, um, and and this is a change to what was shared with you because we had new information that was shared with me today. So our outreach program coordinator left in June, so that position is now vacant. And I suspended that position till we could have this overall conversation in direction from the board. Um, and then today we learned that our new communication specialist that just started with us just a little while ago has uh, successfully obtained another position away from the district. So that position will be vacant. And so um, what I was gonna propose on this one, and there's a couple of the options, was to move forward with the outreach program coordinator. But based on this new information that came out today, um, what we need to do is we need to review within the marketing education team of the responsibilities, although they're very different. Um, take a look at those and refine them as we've done in other areas and then make a recommendation on that to you in August. Our goal in August anyways, if the board was agreeable, was then to show you where those dollars um, could be made up and shifted to make this happen. Obviously, to bring a position on full-time midstream in the year requires resources. There's some savings that were obtained through the earlier uh, savings from the GIS specialist to the GIS analyst, or the database to the GIS analyst. And with the positions not being filled, that have been seasonals. Um, and then of course, positions going vacant and 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 being empty. So there are some savings there, they just may be in the wrong uh, account items. Um, from the operations and public safety, uh, just to explain this a little bit further. It was out there, um, if you take away the adding for the six months. So this would be what we'd be looking for is an October 1st start. Um, if we advance it earlier than April 1st of next year, so uh, 50% including loaded with all the benefit costs would be $35,692. Um, and on this first piece that was out there, 50% or the six months of the electrician would have been $12,0062, beginning with $23,630 of the estimated costs. Now below that, if we take out the remainder of the past six months that we haven't employed an electrician, you've got an additional $12,062 to go towards that. The seasonal position of 4,500. Um, so in essence, to make up, to bring that full-time uh, maintenance worker onboard on October 1st, we need to find another $7,100, $7,068. And again, we've received greater than that already with the savings uh, that we've done earlier in the year. So um, and we can look to making that in other areas. So our preferred option uh, with all of that was to uh, get your approval. Again, if you're in concurrence, we'd bring this back formally next month to hire a new full-time facilities maintenance worker in 2022 in advance of 2023. Um, and then to reevaluate those two positions, um, and then to bring that back in August. Um, and then these would be effective October 1st. With the other options, option two, because of the two positions in marketing and education, I believe that's no longer applicable, so we won't go there. But the other option would be to postpone hiring the facilities maintenance worker until 2023, leave it vacant. Um, then projects that will just take their normal course of action, look at hiring someone to look at the HVAC and we'll just prioritize projects, triage, put out-of-order signs if necessary and and do as we can. I mean, that's what we've been doing, um, so this doesn't change that. It's just with some positions that may go vacant, uh, which we know they're gonna be on a leave. It's just going to make that more concerning. Um, and then reevaluate the outreach program coordinator. I think once we analyze that, I'll be able to tell you whether our recommendation is the positions have changed. And we recommend going forward with both. We recommend doing something different, recommending, you know, initially it was to to bring the one forward because there are impacts. If we do not, as you've written in the report, um, that outreach program coordinator is effectively doing school trips, programs, special events and other activities and and doing outreach. And if we don't do that, um, we'll just have less program service to do. So it's really up to the board at the level of service, um, and what the priorities are. Um, in that team, these were items that were already in the budget. And so what I have tasked the team in on both uh, departments, as with all in discussions, are what other areas that are of a non-personnel nature, um, can they find so that we don't add to the costs or grow that that we're able to mitigate? Is there something else that can go away? Um, obviously we'd shift it to personnel, but would be in reductions. Discussion on 2023, we talked about 2022 advancing facility maintenance earlier and then where we're at with those other two positions, if there's any general thought, otherwise we'll go back.
You put option one back up. So basically, option one, you're just hiring one person.
Option one, well, we're reevaluating.
But you're reevaluating, that doesn't mean you're hiring them, you're just reevaluating there.
And we'll bring the proposal back to you next month. But those two, the facility maintenance worker is not in the budget for 2022. The outreach program coordinator and the communications record, the relations specialist are in the budget. They were staffed.
But they're not, they're not gonna be here right now because people left.
One left and one's gonna be leaving at the end of the.
Right, so they're drawn to your reevaluate. So the other one, they're gonna be down a person or two because of leave. Correct, and we already have some projects that we can't get done, isn't it? So this new maintenance worker, what is that person going to be asked to be with?
Well, John, why don't you take that?
Well, one of the, one of the big things that's not getting done is they, um, I'm gonna use the term group projects. It's the kind of project that requires two people to do a hanging uh, site, something like that. Um, what the, the main focus of the person is going to be shadowing Lost Valley Visitor Center employees or the employee that's up there. Uh, we've not done a lot of cross-training on that. Um, and a few years ago, um, with the, um, you know, we lost several employees in the slave maintenance department all at the same time. And we were left in a real wretch on that building, it's a very complicated building. Um, and the employee that we have that currently has had several years to learn it or to intricacies. And that's the one thing, um, that uh, we wanna make sure that we get a hold of and we get that information, that institutional knowledge passed over to somebody. The, the second part, and I think this is probably the most critical thing, is that they would also then switch to doing more work orders. Um, where, and and we would leave then a couple of the other two people to work together on these projects that take multiple, multiple days to do. Um, it, that seems to be the thing that, um, you know, it's, it's very difficult for us to get to that. We'll send one guy to start on a project, maybe we can send somebody else down there for a while. Uh, and then boom, you know, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon and they get a call saying, hey, you're gonna have to pull off that, um, and and run and check this thing out. I know it's a life safety issue, a light like this is out or something like that. We've gotta get it addressed right away. So we're hoping that that person then would be able to switch over. Either whoever has the talent to be able to do that stuff, but just have enough people on a job site for an extended period to uh, seriously knock it out, um, and to get it done and accomplish. And I think that's really what we're looking for, is to be able to to do that. And you know, the, the numbers that that we have currently, um, I mean, if we go down the two people, we're really got two people left in that uh, that group. Um, so it would be, I think they would just run to keep up and 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 not do any additional work projects.
Well, you're talking about 50% of the people, um, not really very likely they can do that.
This is about us.
I really think that option one is really our only, only option at this point in time. You also have any comment?
I'm okay with option one.
You got a consensus, we're agreeing on one thing.
And um, and you're also comfortable not knowing by this direction we'll go through and evaluate where those other positions are and and how they work within that team. All right, thank you.
Okay, does that take care of all your personnel? Everybody have any questions on anything personnel wise right now? Okay, we'll move us on to McHenry County Conservation Foundation project funding list.
I don't believe Shawna is out there, but um, and Linda, thank you, you had a good meeting uh, this, this past week on on the foundation project. So what we've done is identified uh, in the areas of recreation, education, land protection. I don't have a PowerPoint for you, it was in your four packet, of various projects. Um, and so really what we're looking for to move this forward to the foundation is if there is general projects that are on the list and if there's anything that is of concern, um, that we would not want the foundation to work towards approving or funding, then we should take them off the list.
Do they have any issues?
You guys have the list?
We did, so we got it. They have any issues?
No, we had utility trail vehicles, utility tractors, uh, the elevancy retaining wall replacement, um, Prairie View Exploration Station furniture, a bilingual story trail for Rush Creek, um, some land management stewardship of muscle reintroduction. Uh, again, the Checker Spot project and the Weekend of Restoration, uh, bootstraps for beginning biologists, corn to compass plants and chimney swift subdivision, bogey bog phase two, uh, swamp metal marks, reintroduction to the kid to burn school and growing the grasslands, uh, a seed harvester. Um, so there's a variety, obviously they're not gonna pick all of them, but it just is a plenty for them to see what, what is it.
See what they want, see what they.
They ever, they ever talk about anything that we don't have on the list, they'd like to see us too?
Um, no, but they do like diversity. They like education and field work and all of that.
Okay, we're good with that, then we'll remove on to uh, executive director's report.
Um, I'm gonna save all my comments to next week, uh, just on basis of time. Um, and uh, I think we are based on, uh, we will have an executive session added to the agenda. Um, and so, but uh.
We're good for now then.
We're good.
They also have anything else to bring before the meeting tonight? I don't wanna say something.
I do, I'm gonna talk to you.
Uh, four, I guess I wanna what? Oh, no. You're good with that, okay, um, hold on comments.
There is none.
From out there.
There is none.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So we go on there, executive session?
I'll second.
There's a motion made in second, uh, we'll call both, please.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Chris Thomas? Yes. Christie Campbell?
Yes.
Christie Gaten?
Yes.
And Christie Hennig?
Yes, motion carries unanimously, we'll take a five-minute break and we go into executive session.
Thank you, then we don't expect action, there's no action.
Following this, so.
Thank you.
And this should be a fairly short executive session. We need a roll call, let's say we're all here.
Okay, uh, Christie Gaten?
Here.
On for secrets? Oh, sorry, Christie Campbell?
Here.
Christie Cook?
Yes.
Christie Thomas? Yes. Christie Down?
Here.
Christie Hennig.
Present. Okay, now, oh, I can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
She, wait, so the second window? Okay, roll call to adjourn.
Christie Campbell? Yes. Christie Thomas? Yes. Christie Gaten?
Yes.
Christie Cook?
Yes.
Christie Down?
Yes.
Christie Hennig.
Yes, we are adjourned.